Okay, PET would like to present their next witness, Nathan Deron. And I will start going through a line of questioning to certify him to get him qualified as an expert. So can you start by...
And despite your last name, please.
D E R O N.
And Nathan, any DM.
Right.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony or advocate will be confidential for the purposes of protection of privacy?
I do.
Thank you.
Can you, you already stood, it shouldn't even put the record, it doesn't need that now. Can you go ahead and go over your education for me?
Of course, I received a BA in Social Sciences from the University of Pittsburgh, Kumbalik, and a Master's of Science in Public Policy, Management and Data Analytics from Harding University with highest distinction. My graduate studies focused on understanding, evaluating, and implementing a wide variety of data models to inform our public policy. These models include classical and basic statistics, a variety of basic and advanced machine learning algorithms, and econometrics, a type of statistical analysis concerned with causal relationships. This training has also allowed me to understand, evaluate, and implement physics-based models like the one I hope to share with you this evening.
Great, and can you go over your qualifications? Let's start with who is your employer?
The Environmental Health Project.
And what is your position there?
I'm an environmental data scientist.
And how long have you been there?
Since June of 2020.
Have you published or been a co-author on any peer-reviewed case studies?
Yes, I have. I was a co-author on the 2020 two-paper Community-Based Participatory Research for Low-Cost Air Pollution Monitor in the wake of unconventional oil and gas development in the Ohio River Valley. This was published in Environmental Research Letters.
And what portion of this case study did you contribute?
I have conducted emissions dispersion modeling, much like the work I plan to present this evening.
And where else have you used this type of modeling?
I have conducted modeling related to shale gas development specifically for five EHPU projects across Allegheny, Westmoreland, and Washington Counties, as well as around the Beaver Cracker in Beaver, Pennsylvania, the Canasta Westmoreland Power Plant, the Dominion Compressor Station in Powantin Point, Ohio, the proposed Inenergy Allegheny Energy Center here in the township, the Crooked Valley Energy Center in Dover Plains, New York, and around the variety of heavy industry sites in the Monarch Valley. Altogether, I've conducted this work in 20 different locations.
And what do you use this modeling for?
Generally, we use this to understand where we expect air emissions from a specific source to end up. We and our partners at EHP use this mainly to inform monitor placement.
Great, and I would like to go ahead and request that the board recognize Nathan Deron as an expert in air pollution dispersion.
Any objections?
No objection at this time, I reserve cross-statement, thank you.
Nathan is an expert.
We'll mark this as seven, PET seven. Okay, so let's go ahead and start, let's see if this mouse works, so we can start presenting. You want to go sit over there? Okay. Just wait till I tell you to change the slide. Thank you. Okay, and while she's getting kind of set up there, did you prepare this presentation?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and... Can you tell us what pollution dispersion modeling is?
Certainly. Pollution dispersion modeling, also referred to as emissions dispersion modeling or atmospheric dispersion modeling, is a mathematical simulation of how air pollutants disperse in the ambient atmosphere. It is performed with computer programs that include algorithms to solve mathematical problems and equations that govern pollution dispersion. The dispersion models are used to estimate the downwind ambient concentration of air pollutants or toxins emitted from sources like industrial plants, vehicular traffic, or accidental chemical releases.
Okay, so is pollution dispersion modeling a tool to help make public health policy decisions?
Yes, they are the dominant type of model used in air quality policymaking, an area with substantial public health implications.
Great, and Joel, can you put this slide to just to the space bar and say, there you go. So can you tell us about the particular dispersion model you used for your analysis?
Certainly. I use the HighSplit Modeling System developed by the National Atmospheric and Oceanic Administration. It is one of the most widely-used dispersion models in the atmospheric sciences around the world. It can simulate a wide variety of emissions and can be applied anywhere from the local to global scale. It can also use a wide range of weather data for its calculation. HighSplit additionally has capabilities to model atmospheric chemical reactions and other pollutant-specific dynamics. But here we are only looking at generic primary air pollutants, and these capabilities have not been used in this situation.
Can you, can you tell me what primary air pollutants are?
Certainly. Primary air pollutants or primary emissions are those that come directly from the source and go into the atmosphere. They contrast with secondary air pollutants, which are primary air pollutants that then react with other compounds in the atmosphere to go on and form other compounds.
Great, and did you use your skills in pollution dispersion modeling to determine where we would expect emissions from this site to disperse to?
Yes, I used the, I looked at the Herakles site as potentially two different sources. No, it's just a slide later on, you can go through a bit, keep going, keep going. We'll get that. One more, I think, there you go. So there are two emission sources that we modeled. And in my updated slides, I have the exact lap long, but I have them here in front of me. We modeled, if I mean, I modeled emissions from two sources. One is meant to look at impacts from the wellheads. I used the coordinates provided in the conditional use permit application for the 5M wellhead, which is about in the center of the six wellheads. For the record, that little well, the location is 40.251598, negative 79.865417. The second location was to determine the impact of the interconnect, the interconnect pad. That was taken again from materials provided as per conditional use permit. And the exact location was referred to as the end of proposed pipeline. The location of that is 40.2520, negative 79.8640. I apologize for the outdated slides.
That's okay. Can you tell me how you did the modeling?
Sure, so we can go all the way back to before we put this forward.
Would that be this slide here, sorry?
Yes, this one, thank you.
Okay.
So for each of the two locations, I mentioned we went through the same process. For each source, we start by simulating the release of 10,000 particles over the course of an hour. The emission rate is set as a generic reference rate. These particles are also set to be generic. They mix with the atmosphere without dropping out, like volcanic ash paint, and without being removed by water, like acid rain. We then tell the model to track these particles for 48 hours, as you can see on the slide, in three dimensions. Depending on the weather conditions at the time of the release, these particles can stay quite near the source or they can travel quite far from it, as you see in this example. Let me go ahead to the next slide. Then the model converts these particles to ground-level hourly concentrations based on specifications that I provide. This removes any emissions that are too high in the atmosphere to impact people. So this one-hour release of emissions becomes 48 separate hourly ground-level concentration maps. Go ahead to the next one. We then repeat this process for every hour in an entire year, or 8,760 times. At the end of the year of modeling, we now have 420,480 hourly concentration maps. This will include a wide variety of weather patterns and account for both seasonal differences and all weather events that can be expected to occur each year. I believe the next slide is probably the omitted, if these are old slides. Yeah, so a step that I have illustrated for you, we have then combined outputs from all these different hourly releases. So we're tracking every release for every hour for 48 hours after it happened. So there's a lot of overlap, right? If we look at, for instance, 3:00 AM some morning, this morning, for instance, that's going to be impacted by the release that happened at 2:00 AM and the release that happened at 1:00 AM and at midnight, 11:00 PM the night before, and so on. So we have to recombine all of those together to get back to 8,760 different hourly concentration maps. Let me get to this slide. Now our approach splits in two to build two different results for each source location. So we're going to have two different results for two different locations. The first that I have here is the annual average relative concentration. And we will see these maps in greater detail in a couple slides. We use this average to point, excuse me, we then find the point on this map with the highest annual average concentration based on this model. And we rescale the rest of the study area around this wellsite relative to that largest... The reason we do that is because we don't have emissions data from this site. The site has not been built, and we do not have anticipated emissions information from the applicant to be able to understand or model what exactly is coming off of the facility. The second result that this model returns is an annual maximum hourly concentration. This helps us understand the places that will see short-term spikes in emissions from the source over the long term. The previous, the average, helps us understand consistent emissions that will be seen over the long term. This will help us understand where we might see short-term spikes in emissions from these source locations. Depending on the analysis goals, short-term spikes of emissions may be of concern. Almost always, consistent emissions are of concern, however. This approach finds the one highest hourly concentration from the 8,760 hourly concentrations that we generate. And we then rescale the output to be relative to the point that saw the highest maximum hourly concentration over the course of an entire year, and then we get this output. If there are any questions, we can go over them.
All right, all right, all right. So the modeling that you did specifically for the Herakles site, what were the results of that modeling?
Sure, you can go to the next slide. All right, move to the next slide. So this here is the relative average impact over a year from an emission source located at the 5M wellhead. This shows us where emissions will consistently end up over the long term. The locations that saw the greatest impact on average was to the northeast of the emission site. On this graphic, if you can read the legend, the emission site is located at the Blue Pin. And the receptor with the highest annual average is to the northeast. We can also see that average impacts extend further to the northeast than to the southwest. Go to the next slide. These results show the relative maximum hourly impact over a year of an emission source located at the proposed 5M wellhead. This shows us where short-term spikes in emissions will likely happen over the long term. The location that saw the highest short-term impact was to the northwest of the emission site, with relative high-magnitude short-term impacts extending further from the source than we saw with the averages. Go to the next slide, we'll then look at the results for the interconnect. They do tend to look quite similar, as these locations are quite close to one another. These results show the average relative impact over a year of an emission source located at the proposed interconnect pad. This again shows us where emissions will consistently end up over the long term. Again, the location that saw the greatest impact on average was to the northeast of the emission site, and average impacts extended further to the northeast than to the southwest. Finally, the next slide, thank you. These results show the relative maximum hourly impact over a year of an emission source located at the proposed interconnect pad. This is the last one, I have a thought. This shows us where short-term spikes in emissions will likely happen over the long term. Again, the location that saw the highest short-term impact was to the northwest of the emission site, with relative high-magnitude short-term impacts extended further from the source than we saw with the averages.
Okay, and I have a question on this thing. Those maximum concentrations, under what conditions could we expect those maximum concentration scenarios that you talked about?
Yeah, so again, the information that is presented on these maximum graphs, they're looking at events, basically the worst short-term event that could happen at all of these locations over the course of a year. And always, this is going to happen when the air is stagnant, when emissions are not able to disperse. This can happen under a variety of conditions, most often at night, under very calm conditions, or under the impact of a temperature inversion.
And just to, just to make sure that we're clear on this, does this modeling take into account other pollution sources that may already be present in the area?
No, this modeling only shows pollution dispersion from the two sources I outlined earlier.
And is, is, in your experience doing these models, is pollution additive? Like, meaning if there was already background sources present, what would, what would the general impact of those additional sources be?
The presence of other sources of the same pollutants coming off of any of these sources would only add to the concentrations we would expect to see around the proposed emissions source.
Okay, so looking at these, in terms of the Elizabeth Forward High School specifically, what did your modeling show? Like, if you could explain to us, what does this show?
Certainly. In the last four graphics I've shown here, we can see that the Elizabeth Forward High School is likely to see consistent impacts from either emission source at roughly 10% of the location that saw the greatest impact. Additionally, the model shows that the high school is expected to see short-term impacts, at least a quarter the magnitude of the highest short-term impact from either proposed emission source. It is my professional opinion that the results of this atmospheric dispersion modeling show that emissions from both sources are expected to reach the Elizabeth Forward High School.
And does this model show any type of, like, pollution itself? Is it detailed that it says a certain kind of pollution?
No, we do not have the information provided to us to be able to put in specific emissions factors from these sources. We were not told, and I do not have information about how much of which different pollutions will, or pollutants, rather, will be emitted when and in what quantity. So this is all simply relative, again, to those receptors that we saw the highest impacts over the years worth of modeling. I will also say this is a pretty regular occurrence, that we do not have the information to put into a full model that's saying we can account for every emission that we expect to come off of a site. And so we have developed this relativistic approach to be able to understand the geographic distribution of the emissions coming from a site.
Okay, yeah, final, final question, just looking at, you know, these maximum concentration models that you did. Which, which areas do you, would you say, like, outside of, outside of the site? Like, I see this, I see this really dark purple here. Outside of those, which, which areas there are the most impacted?
It would seem to me, based on my modeling, that the areas that see the greatest impact from these sites are both the Fox Run Residential Development and the Elizabeth Forward High School.
Thank you, Nathan, I have no more questions for you.
Witness on the floor? Just to be clear, sir, your model tells us nothing about, first of all, the type of pollution or emissions.
That is correct.
And secondly, and thirdly, it tells us nothing about the quantity of those emissions, correct?
That information was not provided to me, and so I could not include it in this model.
Were you provided with the testimony of Dr. Chris Long we gave earlier in this proceeding?
Objection, that's actually outside the scope of his testimony. He's testifying just to dispersion modeling, as I asked him to be an expert, qualified as an expert on, which is the actual dispersion modeling. Dr. Chris Long spoke to actual air pollutants, which my, my witnesses said numerous times that that's, that's not what he did here.
She hasn't got there yet, so I don't want to rule your objection. You can, she can ask whether he has provided with certain problems.
Were you provided with the testimony of Dr. Chris Long we gave here?
I reviewed the slides that he presented.
And are you aware that Olympus has testified here that they intend to do air monitoring both prior to their development and during their development at this site?
I am aware of that, yes.
And in fact, you testified that the purpose that you have used these, I think you said 22 times, you've done this kind of modeling, the whole purpose of it is to determine where monitors should be placed, correct?
That is generally how we use these models, that is correct.
And going back to your lack of information that you testified to with respect to the type of emissions, are you familiar with the literature that exists, some of which Dr. Long testified about, so you must have seen it on these slides, with respect to the types and quantities of emissions that have been monitored at gas well, unconventional gas well sites?
I am familiar with the kinds of pollutants that tend to come from unconventional gas wells, yes.
And are you familiar with the monitoring that's been done with respect to the quantity of those various pollutants?
In what situations?
Are you familiar with any situation, let's start with that?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the Pennsylvania DEP air monitoring that's been done over the last decade?
I am familiar with the DEP air monitoring program, yes.
Are you familiar with the air monitoring done at the Allegheny County Health Department at their Deer Lakes wellsite and at their Imperial Point wellsite out by the airport?
I have not.
Are you familiar with the M monitoring that was done at the Fort Cherry High School and was published in two different publications, one by Mascrey and one by Dr. Chris Long?
I have not extensively reviewed those results.
Did you say Mascrey?
Oh, sorry, Mascrey, M A S K R E Y. I believe you testified, just want to make sure I heard this correctly, that based on your modeling and your knowledge of, I guess, meteor, how meteorology impacts air dispersion, you would expect that the maximum concentration of whatever emissions, in whatever quantity, which you don't know, are coming off of this site would occur at nighttime, correct?
I testified that they could occur at night.
I think you testified that they more likely occur whether it's either inversion, inversion, or at nighttime.
I, excuse me, I testified to the fact that these always occur when air is stagnant. And I gave two examples of stagnant air conditions, one are calm nights, another being air inversion.
Have you, in, in your capacity with the Environmental Health Project, ever provided modeling or testimony like you're providing here tonight in support of an oil and gas development?
I have not presented air quality modeling in support of a particular well type, I think.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Redirect? Nathan, have you ever, have you ever testified in support of any other party in a wellhead case?
I have, this is my first time testifying for or in relation to any gas development.
And Nathan, can I ask you, why, why did you take it, why did you take an interest in this project specifically?
The Environmental Health Project became interested in this situation here because of the proximity to the Elizabeth Forward High School.
Thank you, no more questions?
Any questions from?
No, no, I can go first, Nathan.
Yeah, I was about to, pardon, any other questions from the other parties? Any questions when we finish, or just based on that testimony?
So if your employer, the Environmental Health Project, was interested in this development because it was near your school, why, why did you not? because it was near a school, why, why did you not review air, air monitoring, actual monitoring that's been done at other locations in order to determine information about both the type and quantity of air emissions?
I am familiar with air emissions that come off of sites and specifically well pads. However, there is a great and large diversity in the quantity and composition of emissions that come from different sites. I did not feel the need to review materials that would be easily dismissed as not applicable to this situation.
And you have no information applicable to this situation, just to be clear, by type or quantity?
I have information that I presented here about the geographic distribution of generic air pollutants coming off of the two sources that I outlined before.
And you have no information with respect to Herakles and what you presented here with respect to the type of air pollutants or the quantity of just Herakles, correct?
Not as part of this modeling, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bell?
No.
Just to understand this, because I think everybody's, you know, find this is important. The density of emissions, is there a difference between one foot off the ground versus ten foot off the ground versus a hundred foot off the ground? At what level is this done?
This is done at ground level, and due to limitations with the model, that is averaged from zero feet to ten feet. So it's assuming everything in that band would be the same. This does take into account the topography of the terrain as well, so we're just talking about, it, it follows the ground, as it were.
And do different elements change the direction of this model of work? Meaning, you know, if we have just standard, we're just kind of using an average, you know, if there was oxygen, would that travel different than helium?
So we are-
Using those type of things, those minerals, helium, helium.
Thank you.
The kinds of constituent emissions would not change how they interact in the atmosphere unless they are particularly heavy and would be able to drop out. That's going to be very large particulates or things, as I mentioned, like volcanic ash, pollen would also drop out eventually. But different gases, by and large, will mix in what we call the boundary layer, so that's everywhere that, you know, humans live our lives. Everything will mix as one homogenous mixture, if that makes sense. If you get, you know, really heavy metals that have been aerosolized, those can also drop out, even if they're in elemental form, but elemental gases are not going to float or sink based on their atomic mass, but rather based on air dispersion characteristics. So that answer your question?
Yeah, sort of. I mean, I, I think what you're saying is it depends on what chemical they produce, how far out it will actually get, is basically what you're saying.
Yeah.
Or, or vice versa, or out dead.
Most pollutants will behave like the generic pollutants that, or the generic emissions that I put into this model. There are several kinds of pollutants that will behave differently, but we'd have to get into exactly-
Yeah, you need to know what the pollutants are to actually have a relevant idea of what is actually out. This is just best-case scenario.
Yeah, and one of the advantages of-
I'm gonna rephrase, I'm not best-case scenario, I would say, your best guess is America.
Precisely. The, the, one of the things we've done here as well is we only track pollutants for forty-eight hours after they're, after they're admitted. There are a good number of pollutants that will, over the course of, you know, weeks or months, react with other compounds in the atmosphere, as I mentioned, and turn into other things, and those go elsewhere, and the, the fact that we're stopping it after forty-eight hours makes sure that we're not tracking the things well past the time that they would have gone and reacted and turned into something else. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Could I do a quick redirect on that? Thank you. Nathan, last question. So you testified, you testified that, you know, this modeling is used, you know, to, to inform where to put monitors for air monitoring, correct?
For air monitoring, that is, yes.
Right. So you would say that these, would you say that these, these models, based on your experience with creating these models, and then what you end up with monitor-wise are pretty accurate?
These models do a good job of showing us where we can capture emissions from emission sources, yes.
Great. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. And that's it for this witness?
Yeah. I do a short bathroom break.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Do a three-minute recess.
I've been drinking a lot of coffee over here.